to wait for the meeting to end. The draft minutes missed the substance of Mr. Gargano's presentation as follows. On May ninth, Mr. Stephen Gargano of Oakland Avenue appeared before the village board seeking help due to damage to his and to neighboring properties which occurred after September's flushed downpour at the village culvert on Oakland Avenue. Mr. Gargano had previously been to the town board and was told the village is responsible for addressing the backup of water at the culvert. The damage to his property is extensive and very costly. He is also at risk of recurring in future storms. In bringing his concern to the village board, Mr. Gargano is following the process any resident of Woodbury should when they have a problem relating to village oversight. He is correct to ask the village board to assist in remedying this situation. He presented photos and other evidence of damage on the overflow on Oakland Avenue. He stated that he had been meeting with engineers and highway superintendent but had no feedback on remedial plans. I would like this entire statement to be included in the draft minutes. People should know that there is a process for residents with legitimate village issues to be heard. They have a right to expect village board members to take their concerns seriously and to work with them whenever possible to seek solutions. Additionally, I'd like to add that the draft minutes include an interesting comment by Mayor Jemaco, Jemaco, the mayor, that he does not plan to honor the administrative rule for public comment which provides that people have no more than five minutes to speak until everyone who wishes to have an opportunity has that opportunity to speak. These rules were adopted by the council in January and the mayor voted for them. Rather than moving the meeting along by adhering to the rule, the mayor then allowed Mr. Nigg to continue at both town and adhering to the rule, he allowed Mr. Nigg, a regular at town and village board meetings, to speak more than 10 minutes. After listening to him for more than 10 minutes, it was clear there was no action to be taken. He is repeating his concerns about the influx of new people to Woodbury, which he made at previous meetings. At this time, Mr. Gargano was waiting for me to exchange information and talk about his flooding issue. In order not to further delay him any further, I retired from the meeting to obtain the information. This was to identify the damage to Mr. Gargano's property and prevent future incidents, namely to remedy the culvert overflow notwithstanding the insurance claim, as we need to get as much information as possible from all departments. In addition, I would like my fellow board members to stand by their vote in January, which we agreed that the purpose of public comment period is for residents to identify village problems and subsequently identify actions to address those problems, as agreed by all board members in the January vote. The purpose of the time, though, is not to restrict the public's access to the board, but to ensure the process is not taken up with filibustering.
Let me begin by apologizing for saying that this was going to be a quick rest of the meeting, because apparently it's not going to be. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as written. Can I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I.
Matt, where do you stand?
Is this for opposed or, sorry, to be clear? You're saying for a proposal or?
I am.
There's a motion to approve.
There was already a motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented. I am just following along with that.
I would like Mr. Gargano's testimony to be reflected accurately, so I'll be in no.
Okay. Minutes approved. Okay. Village Clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract 23?
Abstract 23 contains vouchers 23242643 to 23242760 and totals $204,254.24.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 23 as read?
No move.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Furelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appointment to the planning board, term beginning June 1, 2024. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the appointment of Christopher Graziano to the planning board with a term to begin June 1, 2024 and expire May 31, 2029? Do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Suriello, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Trustee Fabro?
Nay, this would be based off of our previous, yeah, okay, so I'm a nay on that.
Congratulations, Mr. Graziano, welcome aboard. Appointment to the zoning board of appeals, terms beginning June 1, 2024. Can I have a motion in a second to appoint Craig Brady to the zoning board of appeals with a term to begin June 1, 2024 and expire May 31, 2029?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an additional item that came in today, acceptance of resignation. Can I have a motion in a second to accept the resignation of Mike Pinella, head building inspector effective June 6, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Yep, I got the motion by Trustee Furelli, seconded by Trustee Suriello. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hold.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Mike is resigning effective, you said, June?
Six would be his last day.
Um, hmm. All I'd like to say is I would have appreciated a little heads up, but um.
It literally just came in today.
Yeah, for Mike, but yeah, it's, yeah. Okay.
Anything, trustee Freibin?
Was there any statement as to the cause of his sudden resignation?
There was not. There was not. The letter was very simply put that he appreciates his time in the village of Woodbury and my last day is June 6.
Mr. Mayor, was, were the results of the civil service exam available to the board at this point?
They are not available yet. The list has not been certified. So I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, under new business, and it's a discussion on sewer hookup of 16 Janus Drive, John First is here. Communication was received from container man and writer representing 16 Janus LLC requesting to utilize the village's municipal sewer services. Currently, they are in front of the planning board proposing to replace the existing single family home with a two-story, single-family home.
Good evening. My name is John First. I'm the attorney for the owner, 16 Janus LLC. As the mayor had explained, we're looking for a sewer hookup. So just so the board's familiar, 16 Janus Drive is at the intersection of Janus Drive here and Scunny Monk. It's a 1.6 acre parcel. It's obviously, you could see it's long and narrow. There's a ditch over here by Scunny Monk. There's some sloped area over here. Right now, there's currently a private septic and private water. I think the well is down over here. The septic is right here where the proposed house is going. The existing house is over here. They're going to reconfigure the driveway, shift the house over a little bit. It is basically a replacement with respect to bedrooms. It's an existing four-bedroom house that will be replaced with another four-bedroom house, although it will be larger. So the applicant would like to connect to the municipal sewer line, which is just, actually, if you look at it, I think this dotted line is part of the sewer easement where the line goes. So all these properties this way, and I think over here, are served by the municipal sewer. So they would run the line, I think this is about 150 feet to Scunny Monk, to the corner of the property, and then go down about 115 feet and connect to the existing sewer line. So again, we're right adjacent to properties that do hook into the sewer system. It's only, it's a very close connection, about 115 feet from the property line. The septic system is relatively old, about 40, 40 years old. So we feel, given the unique shape of the property, because it would be kind of hard to reconfigure everything, they squeeze everything in there on the narrow parcel, as well as some of the, you know, you have the ditch here, you have the sloping there. So there are some constraints with respect to the parcel. And more importantly, given the proximity to the existing sewer line, you know, we don't think this will result in additional ask from other property owners up this part. I think this is Van Tesel over here, there's a house here, a house here. The lots are much bigger, much more spread out, a much greater distance. So we don't think it's going to result in additional requests from the neighborhood to hook in. I think this is kind of unique, given the close proximity that we're adjacent to other parcels. So unfortunately, the engineer is not here, our engineer is not here to answer any specific engineering questions, but I think for tonight, we're just looking for some initial feedback from the board, if they have any questions, and then we can follow up with some additional information if the board needs it.
All right, Mickey, do you want to comment first on this?
Yes, that's way over 100 feet from that intersection, two to the first manhole, that ceiling manhole.
Correct, I'm not measuring from the intersection, I'm measuring.
Right from where your finger is to the manhole, it's probably at least 900, 1,000 feet away.
Well, like I said, the engineer is not here, and that's what he told me on the phone.
Except the Saliba, when you're not, it's your number's off a little bit. I would recommend extending the sewer district, because once we get into that intersection, everybody that's up Janus Drive and Van Tesel is going to want it. And then once that's taken care of, as you head up the hill to the next development that's up there, and that pump station, I don't think we'll be able to handle all of that. We're going to be putting a brand new commonuter in that was built on the phone we have now, not the phone in the future. So the money we just spent on that, we have to buy another one. So I would recommend that. And then the owner would have to pay to put a manhole in with all that footage of eight-inch pipe, because we would not let them put a four-inch pipe down the middle of that road just for one house.
Okay, that's it? All right, Mr. First, I'm just curious, because this is a big expense. You're going to tie into our sewer, 1,000 lineal feet of piping for this. You're going to have to either take the old septic tank out or fill it, one of the two. So this is a big expense. Why, when he's got a septic tank there?
Right, well, I think from an environmental standpoint, it makes sense to hook up into a municipal sewer system. Again, given the age of the existing septic system, I think the preference is, and I think most people like to try to hook into a municipal sewer if they can. I think there's more certainty, more predictability when you're in a municipal system.
Right, now you're.
In the long run, I think he's thinking it's probably going to be worth it.
You're currently in front of the planning board for a addition?
I think it's ARB.
ARB.
There was an ARB approval.
Same thing with me. What is the current house, and then you're proposing in addition to that current house of how many square feet?
Right, so the current house, I believe, according to the assessor's records, I think is about 2,500 square feet, though I can't be 100% sure. And I think the proposed house, I think, is about 11,000 square feet. I'm not 100% sure, though. Again, the engineer's not here. I wasn't at the planning board meetings.
Okay, so it's 11,000 square foot addition, or is it 11,000 square foot when it's all done?
It's, yeah, when it's all done, first, second floor. And I think there's a, actually, there's a table in the floor plans that shows a comparison of other houses that are at about 8,000 square feet. We don't need any variances with respect to the setbacks, lot area. We're all compliant with respect to the setbacks for the house.
That would make it probably the largest house, one of the largest houses in Woodbury compared to Neiman House, I would guess, at 11,000. You wouldn't even know this, I don't know why I'm asking you this.
Yeah, I thought it was a rhetorical question.
Exactly, no, no. All right, any questions from the board? Anything?
Yeah, I, in addition to what Mickey said, my concern, I have a big concern here, is we're negative with our sewer capacity. So we don't have any room to add anything else to the sewer district right now. And then couple that, that we don't have any more capacity there with what Mickey said, I would like to see him find another alternative, get another septic tank or do something, because just tying it into the sewer right now, it's infeasible, in my opinion.
Right, so just to confirm, you have a moratorium, but that's with respect to the water? Correct.
Yeah, sorry, you want to continue or you're good?
What's that?
You're good, or can I?
I'm good.
So we do have a water moratorium. The county is currently looking at expanding from, I think, 6 million to 9 million gallons.
Correct.
Um, I don't know, based off Mickey's comments, that, and especially given the fact that it could expand the sewer district to the whole street, I'm skeptical, too, that that's a good idea to move forward with. I'm kind of in agreement with Vic here. Sewerage treatment plant is over capacity as it currently is, so. Nope. Yeah, I'm finished. Thank you.
Is that it, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Suriello, I'll go back to you first. Any questions?
No.
Okay, trustee Freibin?
I actually think that when the sewers were brought into the community, they did so because of the environmental impacts of septic systems. The fact that at this point, there may be numerous homes that will or do need connections is the village's responsibility, particularly since I believe the sewer districts are moot in a village, to plan for that. And if this can fit into that plan, I suggest we do it. The county, under court order, is required to provide the sewage treatment capacity of the communities that are going into that district. And I think we would be in the same position. We need to basically plan for how to service the territory that's going to grow.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, what's your pleasure? Are we granting?
You're asking the board what their pleasure is. So if the board is interested in doing this, then I would need to prepare for you an out-of-area user agreement, as well as the secret documents for this. I didn't do so yet, until I found out how the board, if the board was interested, or if the board wasn't interested. So if you could go forward on that basis and let me know if I should be putting that together or not putting that together. Oh, sorry. I beat you to it.
Beat me to it, okay. Yes.
I think it's premature to try to do that until we have the engineer who can give us some accurate depiction of what actually has to happen here, given the comments that we talked about. So we know what the impact on the community is going to be.
Yeah, I would like to confirm with the engineer the distance, because again, he told me on the phone it was about 120 feet. So this is about 90 feet right here, based upon the tax parcel, so I don't, and he's saying it's right here, so I would just like to.
The plan that we put down to the office today, he asked me about it, I was like, I'm interested in the deal. And he came back to pick his plan back up, and I told him his calculations were wrong.
So I would like to make sure that calculation is wrong, because I think that's a big difference if you're talking 1,000 feet or 100 feet.
Well, I do think that's one issue, and certainly the board should have the correct information. I was basing my comment upon the H2M memo that the board received on this application.
Which I believe trustee Furelli commented on, about our sewer capacity here in Woodbury. So I will ask again, what is the board's pleasure with this? To deny?
Last thing.
Or carry it over?
Mayor Jackamaza?
Yes.
One last thing. Jim, so you mentioned the county is under court order. Would we then be at any legal risk if we were to not approve this?
Legal risk if the county has court.
Is it not? No, sorry? Okay, better?
You want to know if we'll be at any legal risk?
I'll repeat that for you all, sorry. Jim mentioned we're under court order, or the county, rather, sorry. The county is under court order to expand the sewer district for, I guess, potential future users. If we were to strike down this proposal, would we then be at legal risk?
No.
No.
Not under that.
Thank you.
What's the board's pleasure, once again? For a third time? Anybody?
I'm going to have to vote to deny, again, based on what I said earlier, based on we don't have the sewer's capacity right now, we're negative on that, and then based on what we already said with the commonuters, that we've spent the money to upgrade what we currently have, and then we're going to already start adding stuff, we're just spending more money. It just seems like we're going to, again, that's just my opinion.
Okay. So I have a motion to deny this request for tie-in. Do I have a second?
All second.
All second, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
I got one aye, I got two ayes. Sue, Suriello?
I may be inclined to allow him to check his numbers so that we have the most accurate information, but I will say I am leaning towards a no. I mean, I just can't see, I agree with what Vic said, so.
Okay, trustee Freibin?
I will vote no with no prejudice. You need to bring back accurate information before you ask this question.
All right, I have, I have four to one to deny.
You need to bring back accurate information in order for us to assess this further.
Okay, I mean, this is, this is 90 feet right here. I don't see how that's not 100 feet.
To deny, yes, deny.
All right, thank you.
I'd like a P's opinion.
Four, one. No, he said no, didn't he? Yes.
We're trying to clarify the vote down here, so. So to deny the tie-in, vote, raise your hand. Okay, it is back to.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. First.
All right, resolution of support, Orange County Association TBC Preservation Funds. A resolution of support was requested by county executive Steve Newhouse to introduce and sponsor legislation to amend general municipal law 6S and tax law 1560 and any other laws deemed necessary or proper to allow either, to allow each of the towns and cities in Orange County established by local law or community preservation fund for the protection of their natural, historical and farmland assets, so as to ensure their enjoyment and servability for current and future generations. So the resolution reads as follows. I, Mayor Andrew Jackamaza, and the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, move that we hereby fully support Orange County's Resolution Number 114 of 2024, requesting each state senator and assembly person representing Orange County residents to introduce and/or sponsor state legislation that will add Orange County towns and cities to the list of designated communities in the Hudson Valley eligible to establish community preservation funds. So can I have a motion in a second to approve the resolution as read?
All motion.
Second.
I did, okay. Seconded by trustee Fabro. I apparently made the motion myself.
Oh.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With our new fiscal year starting on June 1, we have several items that require approval before then, so I can have a motion in a second to adopt the holiday schedule of days that village offices will be closed due to holidays and religious observations. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, authorize me to sign stuff. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the preventive maintenance agreement with precision roofing for the roof of village hall at a cost of $2,450?
Motion. All second that?
Seconded by trustee Fabro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Policy removal. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the renewal of the workers' compensation policy with PERMA for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year at a cost of $164,000? Oh, $164,379.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, finally, finally a bit of business. Approval of rate schedule, engineering services for H2M. I know that. So this item will be tabled and moved for approval at our reorg meeting to be held on June 13, 2024. Once again, bring snacks. Okay, public comments on anything in the world, regardless of what the trustee at the far end of the table says.
Jimmy Ing Highland Mills. So let me address this board, or let me start my filibustering. I come here as an engaged citizen of Woodbury. I'm passionate about this area. I don't have an agenda. I don't have to appease anybody. I love this area, my family's in this area, and I get caught up in this. When I see certain issues go on, I speak up, because some people don't. People reach out to me on a regular basis, and it is the thank yous for saying what they want to say, okay? As far as the board is concerned? If, at the end of the day, you work for us, and I've seen you guys make tough decisions, and I've seen you guys ask the questions. When you don't know an answer, you'll ask, you'll ask Kelly, you'll ask Rob, ask Mickey what the answer is, okay? I don't have to name names, but you do have one person on the board who thinks he's smarter than everybody from day one. One person that really has an agenda. I'm not here to be liked, but I think my idol, Maureen, she spoke up. I speak up. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but my concerns are that family man trying to raise a family in Woodbury, where my kids can play in the playgrounds. They're there for the parades, they're there voting for school boards, where they don't have to worry about flooding. I'm not friends with the developers, I'm not friends with these projects, this is not what it's about. I could be sitting here at home watching the Celtics game, but I'm here because we had certain issues that were going to be raised, and this was a packed room. These people are passionate about what's going on, they're engaged. And really, we went through this at the town board, they wanted to censor me. You know what? If you don't have the time to sit here and listen to me and not have the courtesy not to walk out, you shouldn't be sitting here. It's as simple as that, because I may not carry myself, speak the way you want me to, but you work for us, you, we vote for you, well, I didn't, but the citizens vote for you. This is what it's about. Trust me, I've sat here where, I don't want to hear this guy, what is he talking about? But I sit there and listen, maybe I learned something, because I don't know it all, and I don't, I'm not here to contradict, unlike some people. I'm not here to show that I know more, like some people. And really, whatever your credentials are, beautiful, got you elected, I believe, but at this point, you have to listen to the public, because if you don't want to listen to the public, who do you represent? Who are you working for? This is not, this is silly. To go this route, the complete change on this new board, what happened? Yes. It's a constant battle, who's smarter? Well, how about who cares more about the Woodbury citizens? Well, how about who cares more about the Woodbury citizens? I'm very vocal. I'm vocal here. I'm vocal online. And if, if there's a board member that does not like it, too bad. The day I walked through that door and I'm stopped by an officer, Chief Watson, who banned me from coming in, is the day I stop. The day the mayor tells me, Jimmy, you're going on too long. Cut it. I'll respect that because he knows why I'm here. This is not rec. If you can't stand hearing the citizens of Woodbury, step down. For you just to correct everybody and everything and this, you know what? You misspoke here. Just like, cut it out. The Village of Woodbury Board represents us. One, two, three, four people do. I'm sorry, but the fifth man doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Good man. Good man.
Maria Hunter. First of all, Jimmy, thank you for your comments tonight. You put yourself out there, and for what happened at the last meeting, you know I stood up here with a couple other people, but thank you for tonight's comments. I truly appreciate them. Um, on the continuation of thank yous to Rob Wyant and the Highway Department and to the mayor for all of your assistance with the upcoming parade, I truly appreciate it. And the Village Board of Trustees as well, who the mayor has their support with this parade, I can't thank you enough. It's gonna be very warm on Sunday, so dress accordingly. No tight, tight pants when you're marching down that parade line. I also want to thank the village clerk for her minutes that she presented tonight. Most people don't realize, in minutes, you don't have to put anything in there but motions, approvals, who's in attendance. They go above and beyond, whether you're a village clerk, town clerk, deputy clerk. When you take your minutes, it's interpretation. If you really want to know what the hell's going on, watch the video. And I thank you for that, because I've been in that position as a secretary, taking minutes, and I've told people, you're not approving them, you're accepting them, because they're your interpretation of the minutes, and you put in there what is needed and over and beyond. So thank you, Jessica. I would love to have a sewer hookup down on 685 Route 32. It ends at Ridge Road. We haven't had sewer down there since the house was built in 1949. So if the county's going to approve this, I want to be the first one on that list, because we're mildly one of the oldest homes that doesn't have sewer down here. You got that, Mickey? I know. I know, Mickey. Hey, we take, we replace our septic as we need to. We run our own lines, and we do it. I know. But we take care of what we have to do, because we're property owners. So thank you. Just keep that in mind. On a... It's unfortunate, but it's bittersweet that your building inspector resigned tonight, because I was gonna take him out to the carpet tonight. I sent a email to him asking if I missed a planning board meeting because of a business that came into town and the issues that were with it, multiple accessories to accessory to an accessory operating out of this one building. I'll tell you later. And I also mentioned, because I'm very worried about the grass being grown for the parade so the parade looks swell in Woodbury, and his comment to me, he's lucky I didn't run down to the building department.
Uh-oh.
"I will put your complaint on file. As for the grass, I am totally aware that there are many locations that are overgrown as a result of all the rain." Okay, no problem. "I will be enforcing accordingly, so no need to email about them. Feel free to do complaint forms." That's nasty. I'm a resident. I pay taxes. He works for me. He works for all of us. So to say that he is resigning, and with that respect, the complaint form, I don't know when it was revised, because you don't put a revision date at the bottom of the form. We do it in harem, but if the information on this form is not written legible or missing contact information, the complaint will not be accepted as prev... There are people who can't have arthritic hands. They can't print very well. That's wrong. And at the bottom, please allow a minimum of five working days. What are working days? They're business days. You're a business. It should say business, not working. And if someone were to fill out this complaint form, you have your name, your address, a phone number, cell number, an email. Now, if I were to foil something that Maureen, I'm not picking on you, submitted and, and made a complaint, why should her name, we have to make sure that, a foil request that you redact this. Someone could come to our house. Someone can harass us on the phone, by email. I just hope there's some kind of a procedure and policy. I've been talking to a trustee, and I know they're working on it, but I had to make this public because I know with complaints to be done and the kind of response that I got, because I even asked, did I miss a planning board meeting? And that's the kind of a response I got back from the building inspector. Parade. Woo-hoo! Everyone, this book is out. The parade is this Sunday, starts at 1 o'clock. Start off is from Bond Street. Just letting everybody know. Unfortunately, the governor can't be in attendance again this year. She was asked, so she's a little busy. She's a little busy. Um, we do have Congressman Ryan is showing up. Senator Scoofus is gonna show up. And we have our trustees, mayor, deputy mayor, supervisor, board members in attendance. I thank you. Like I said, everyone wear comfortable clothing, keep cool. There will be plenty of water, and I hope it's a great day.
Thank you, Maria. Thomas, the floor is yours.
Maybe we should, as a village, invest in new, uh, microphones, because some people don't know, or do a tutorial on how to work one of these things, um, for certain people. But the first public hearing that started today, there was members here, and then not everything was given so that we'd have a, um, a time to comment on that. All right? The traffic guy, or whatever you want to call him, I don't know what to call him, was sitting there and waiting until we were, most of the, uh, comments were done before he got up and speak, and spoke. I think he should have went first. All right? And now we have another one that's, that came up, and it was a discussion about tying it to the sewer hookup. And again, half the people are here. That's a waste of our time, the board's time. If they can't be here, it gets postponed. If they can't make it in certain times, it should be discarded. It, I'm aware that, like I said before, there's a change, uh, there's a business in the north end of the town or the village that is trying to change their operating hours so that they could get more trucks on and or down the road between the hours. From what I was told, 4 o'clock in the morning to 10 o'clock at night. Um, I travel that section of Route 32. Well, I followed five trucks the other day from the quarry, and they went all the way down to the thruway and got on the thruway, and they did nothing but spew stone dust all the way through the village. That was only five that were in front of me. All right? And because I'm a senior citizen, I have nothing better to do. I like following trucks. All right? I think, and I know we can't depend on it now, but the building inspector resigned. If he was doing his job, maybe instead of him going out at 8 o'clock in the morning and hosing down part of 32, maybe the company that owns the quarry should be doing all of 32, both directions. All right? And, or at least washing the gravel when it's still on the gravel, uh, company's property. Um, and, you know, I still would like to know what is being done with Autumn Lane.
Okay, do you have an update on that? Okay.
Go ahead, Sue.
No, because she's, well, do you have the update?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we, I think we spoke about that. Okay? But there were potholes that were filled on the street, and after speaking with Attorney Norton, she thought it was a good idea we go get some pictures. So she sent the building department out for some further pictures, and she felt that there was some more improvement that could be done. And she spoke to Mike Pinella, and he said he was going to have, they said they would fix those potholes. I think there was two additional that you asked for, two or three, right?
When you looked at the pictures, it still looked like they did do some work, but there were still potholes to be filled in.
But you know, it's not only just the potholes. It's going from the, from the residence, the door of the bungalow to the parking lot. That's, it's unbelievable. Unbelievable. You cannot transport somebody that's a handicapped individual in a stretcher over something that's like the crater of the moon, from what I remember as, as in high school, seeing it, you know, like that. All right? It's impossible. So, and we have to like try and carry the, the child, and it's a disgrace. All right? And I started this, I started this quest back in September.
Yeah.
And it's still May now, and we're still saying, there's still a couple holes. Come on. We can do better. All right? Even if nobody likes what goes on Autumn Lane down there, it should be done. When our other, our old building inspector, he would be there the next day and took care of it in three days. All right? So I'm not, you know, but it has to improve, Andrew. You know, now you're down one. All right? I don't see anything happening. I don't see anything happening over by Walmart. Everybody passes the buck. There's two different towns involved. Somebody was the lead agency when they started building that. Whoever was the lead agency for the building of Walmart and, uh, thank TGIF or whatever that's other restaurant there by KFC, should be the ones in charge of what goes on over there in that parking lot. And, and the maintenance. I don't even know, maybe, Rob, maybe you could tell me, who paved the park, the, the Larkin Drive over there? Was that?
Larkin Drive is a half hour to half hour turnaround.
Okay. But maybe we could get some intermunicipality worker together, you know, instead of being at odds, because I go over there and ask, because I know half the board, and they tell me, oh, it's Woodbury's problem. Then I ask you guys, and you guys tell me it's Monroe's problem. Somebody should be able to decide who.
That was me at a prior meeting, but I did correct myself to the prior trustees that were on the board at that time. That parking lot is the vill, is, not the villages, is in the Village of Woodbury. However, when I went back through all of these secret documents and resolutions, there were no prohibitions on what type of vehicles can park there. The village really doesn't, and the police department, and I talked to them as well, doesn't have the ability to restrict who's parking in a private parking lot there. So I did follow up on that. That is in the village, and I actually spoke with the supervisor in the town of Monroe, because it came up, I guess, at a Monroe meeting. I'm guessing that you were at a Monroe meeting, or somebody else brought it up. But I said no, that that was an error at that meeting, and then I know, I know I specifically...
I know there's problems, because Woodbury Commons thinks it's their overflow for their bus parking, for their commuter, when they transport busloads of people up there, they park them over there. They run for eight hours at a time. What?
I said they may have a private agreement with them. I, I don't know.
I don't think they do. But, but that's up to the town to ask whoever the property owner is. I'm, I'm nobody. All right? I get told mind my own business. Because, you know, I have no problem asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
And what you did last meeting was uncalled for.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
John Keller, Highland Mills. Let's talk about something a little different. It's called respect. It's earned, not given. Jimmy earned my respect. He speaks at the village board meetings. He does it in a professional manner. Maria, she's earned my respect for everything she does in the town and the village. And she speaks here. She speaks her opinion professionally. Mr. Mayor, you and I don't always agree. We don't see eye to eye, but I still say you're my friend, and we respect each other. Now, when you all take office, you make a promise to do respect and to do what you need to do professionally. Mr. Fryban, this has been brought to your attention many times before. So first of all, you owe Jimmy an apology. You owe every board member here an apology, and you owe all the taxpayers an apology for your actions two weeks ago. We expect more from our trustees. This is not a circus. You can't do what you want when you want. There is a protocol, and I suggest you get up to speed quickly. Do your job. When someone comes here to speak, if it's me, Jimmy, Maria, or anyone else in this village, we deserve the same respect from every board member. That means you need to pay attention, listen, and allow us our time, if it's five minutes or more. Your actions two weeks ago were unprofessional and reprehensible. You cannot ever let this happen again. If you cannot fill your duties as a trustee in the proper way, and the way you said you would when you were sworn in, then I strongly suggest you resign and step down and allow the taxpayers to have a representative by someone that will earn our respect. I also suggest you apologize tonight. Start to earn our respect. The rest of this board has.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
I'm just going real quick, because the, when they heard the building inspector left, so, uh, where does that leave me? I know we submitted pictures, and I assume that some of that was turned over to them. Do I start from scratch? Do I wait for the new building inspector? Um, just kind of trying to figure out, you know, what's going on.
The pictures were received by the village clerk's office. They were disseminated to the department heads. With the building inspector out, there are other inspectors that are in that office and Highway as well.
Okay. And then, as far as some of the, the letters that were sent, um, I believe to that other council, I have it down, there were some in there. It's just kind of a reminder, I don't know if you're gonna get back to me, or you're gonna respond, because they, they haven't, and if...
So I can't get back to you, because again, you're represented by an attorney, and I'm not allowed ethically to speak with you. Um, but the other attorney's office can respond to your attorney.
Okay, but if they haven't, and they're the insurance company's attorney, I'm just trying to, I, I assume they're representing, that's why I'm kind of...
Yeah, they're, they're representing the village. What I can do is I can ask him if he has responded and see where that is going.
Okay, that, yeah, just...
That's all that I can do, because...
And, and as I say, you know, thank you, as the spirit, I think of Mr. Fryban was trying to say is, and I'm getting it, you guys are here definitely to help, to find solutions. I, I appreciate that, you know, along the way. Again, it's not going to be tomorrow or whatever it is, but definitely, you know, that's kind of the... Again, it's not going to be tomorrow or whatever it is, but definitely, you know, that's kind of the spirit of, of everything. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Uh, yeah. And while we wait, I'll read from... Yes.
I'm glad, I'm glad to give you one of these lag screws if you'd like, like a few of them. Chris Graziano, Highland Mills. I just wanted to come up here and say thank you to the board. I appreciate the opportunity to continue the service to the village of Woodbury that I started about four or five years ago. I'm more than willing to serve and serve my community and give of my time to help out and do things and lend my expertise in water and wastewater to the planning board. I think it'll, I'm looking forward to working with you all and I'm looking forward to working with the planning board. And as always, Mick, I'm here if you need anything. That is true. So I offer that to the board as well. If you ever need anything in, for the water and the wastewater, you feel free to ask me. I will always be there to help and help the rest of our citizens. So I just want to say thank you again for the appointment and I really appreciate it. I'm looking forward to starting.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, we'll move on to department comment. Mickey? Roberto? Village Clerk?
Yeah, actually, I just want to thank Maria for what you said about the minutes. And I also want to thank you for all the work you do with the parade.
Thank you, Jessica. Consigliere? So, is there...
Thank you. Congratulations, CJ. I think you did great. Your expertise is really needed on the planning board. And I know that the residents are going to be really happy with the skills that you bring forth. So thank you. It's, it's a hell of a lot harder than the village board. Just wait, so just watch the meetings and read all the paperwork, you're going to love it. So, one comment, I remember when we were on that side of the dais, we used to get a lot, where people saying, you have to change the zoning to allow building, property owners have rights. So I'm here to remind you all that property owners have rights to build on the land they have according to the current zoning. You are under no obligation to change zoning for a specific project. And this is something I and CJ and many of us were grappled with for, for, for a lot. And we got a lot of criticism for it, called anti-business and anti-growth. And that is contrary to what we are. We were always about smart growth and smart business. We also enacted very strict environmental laws. And while I know the project that was presented tonight might be outside of the purview of many of those laws, specifically the Water Quality Protection Overlay District, there are many facets of that law which I think should be considered. I know that's going to be under the planning board purview. But I understand that people have a right to build, but I also understand that we have historical flooding in the village. We have, if you've noticed, all of the disrupted wildlife. I know by us, Sue, where we live, an enormous amount of displaced animals, reptiles, all because of the hotel going up on, on Aon. And then if you go by where I dropped my daughter off at school, by WP3, right across the street, the number of deer that I see hit or raccoons or opossums, it's, it's, one is enough enough. So I will just say that. I want to, I'm going to go there because it's something that was always very important to me. Is, we get comments, you get comments as elected officials all the time of things you don't like to hear. That's part of the job. That's part of what you sign up for when you go door to door and you make certain claims that may or may not be true. But you have, as I have said before, if you do share your responsibility to sit there and represent the best of the taxpayers because that's who you are supposed to be. So trustee Fryban, you started out by saying you can't pick and choose which residents you listen to and that you didn't think Jimmy was bringing relevant topics to the board because he was repeating himself. I don't know how you could have made that, that claim when you walked out midway through what he was saying. And there were many comments thrown our way that I didn't appreciate. But I stood there and I listened because that's what you do as an elected official. And I do think you owe him an apology. I do think that you hold a very, you wield a very powerful sword as a trustee. One that where people look up to you and they look to you to be the leader of the community. And I don't think shutting a resident out, whether you agree or not, whether they go over a prescribed time limit or not, because Mr. Gargano, is that your last name, went over the five-minute prescribed limit? I didn't hear you say anything about that. I think you should have. I think you have, I'm not going to go there, but you, you made valid, I watched the whole meeting. I thought what you had to say was very valid and I would do the same thing if I were a resident. But I think Jimmy, regardless if you like him or not, should have been extended the same courtesy. So with that, that's all I have for tonight. Oh, and I just wanted to say, Mickey, again, you are a man of few words, but when you do speak, very powerful. So thank you for speaking up. No, I, I love when you assert yourself because you represent all of us. So thank you, CJ. I'm good. All right, have a great night, everyone.
Kelly, you have anything?
No.
Nothing. All right. Board comments, starting at the far end with trustee Fryban.
I just wanted to make a comment about the Memorial Day Parade coming up. I have walked in that parade for many, many years. And I'm concerned that over the years, the number of people that show up for the parade seems to dwindle each year. I spent 22 years in the Navy. I had, I've been on a number of ships. I'm a Vietnam veteran. I'm concerned that many of my reunions now, there are fewer and fewer people available because they're passed. Memorial Day is not Veterans Day. Memorial Day is to commemorate those who have gone before in service of their country. And I would encourage the public to come out and recognize that's why we're marching and that we go all the way to the cemetery to have a service to commemorate those past, those past veterans who gave it all. And again, I would appreciate anyone to come out, bring your children. I'm sure there will be candy flying around, but it's really there to celebrate the lives of those who have given everything. Thank you.
All right, trustee Fabro.
I'd like to start my comments with thanking everybody for coming out. Thank you for your comments. I'd like to echo Jim's point. Thank you, Maria, for planning the parade. It's a lot of work, I know. And I'd like to thank everybody who, as Jim said, have given the great sacrifice for their country. Second to that, I'm a free speech advocate. I don't love the personal attacks that are happening between this side of the table and the crowd, but I would never stop you from voicing your opinions. And I find the feedback you give me, all of you, insightful. And also, I'd like to move on with regard to the clerks' minutes, just for clarification. It wasn't a snub to Jessica or any of the clerks. Just want to get Steve on the record as being represented fairly. That's my opinion on that. And I have a number of events as usual. First off, we have, as we all said, the Memorial Day Parade. And June 1st, Woodbury Climate Smart Community is going to be hosting their Environmental Day here at Village Hall. I got to double check the time on that, but I believe it's posted on the village website, Environmental Day. And after that, we have the, I got to double check with Alex on this, but the Orange County Milk Bottle Museum is going to be held, I believe, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And you can contact Alex Prizagontis for more information about that. And thank you all.
Thank you. Trustee Fabro. Trustee Suriello.
I would like to make some further comments about what Mr. Fryban said tonight. So, and I'm going to echo kind of what Sarah, sorry, Tara said, not Sarah, but Tara. Okay. First, Mr. Gargano spoke for 25 minutes. And that's okay. I'm okay with that. So don't take that the wrong way. You said to Mr. Gargano that you were, wanted him to show you on a map after the meeting, the area he was speaking about. Jimmy got up and spoke. It was seven minutes when you then decided to get up. And honestly, I thought maybe you just needed to go to the bathroom. I, I think so innocently that maybe it was just that. You walk in front of Jimmy and you leave this room. You can't pick and choose who you're going to, if you want to enforce that five-minute rule, you feel so passionately about that five-minute rule, then you should have stopped Mr. Gargano from speaking. Second, this five-minute rule, I think I questioned originally when we had it on the beginning of the year reorg. And I said, why do we even have this? We don't enforce it. And you said, well, we just have it on the books. Okay, I rolled with it, but maybe it's time to just take it off. Okay? That's one. Two, the other issue I have is that you left this room again, and spoke to Mr. Gargano in private without, in a public, while we were in a public meeting, you held a private conversation that was not recorded, minutes were not taken, and no mention of what was discussed in that meeting when you came back to, finally came back. You're not following the guidance of our legal counsel and you're opening our taxpayers, including myself and everybody that sits in this room, to potential litigation. She's here for a reason. She gives us the guidance that we need. We need to follow that. It protects us, it protects our residents. Maria? I would like for you to turn down the temperature for Sunday, but I will be there. And that's all I have to say.
Trustee Furelli?
Thank you. Thank you. Susan, did you read my notes? Because I, I was going to, I want to echo a lot of what was said about what trustee Fryban did two weeks ago. I agree with a lot of the comments. However, my biggest concern is what trustee Suriello just said was the fact that he, Jim, you got up and you left during a public meeting. You left when the meeting was being recorded. You left when minutes were being taken and nobody knows what was said. It wasn't recorded, it's not in the minutes, but yet you went on for 10 minutes about making sure the minutes were correct. But you had a seven-minute conversation out there, we don't know what was said. So again, you're spinning around, you don't know which end you're going to, and you're causing a lot of problems on this board. So, again, I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. I think a lot of people said how we all feel. So I'm going to just stop there and then I'm going to thank Maria again for everything that you do for the parade. I am looking forward to it. Hope it's not as warm, but I'll take the heat over the rain. So hopefully it doesn't rain on Sunday. And then I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It was actually nice to see a full room. We don't get that too often. So that tells me people are interested and people are concerned and they want to come out. So I do appreciate that. And then lastly, I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
And go Rangers.
Yes, and go Rangers.
There you go.
Tomorrow is big because they flew it last night.
Okay. So thank you, trustee Furelli. My turn. So let me begin by thanking Rich Catagio for his countless years of service between the zoning board and the planning board. As a member of both boards, he has been, seems like he's been there like a piece of furniture for, I don't know how long. So I want to thank him. But at the same time, welcoming CJ Graziano and Craig Brady back. I want to thank you for your dedication to this community. It truly is, the planning board may be the, the worst board to actually be on. I, I can't think of a worse job than that, but CJ, thank you for jumping in to that. Your expertise, as Tara had pointed out, I think is going to come in incredibly handy with all these applications, especially involving water and sewer. So I want to let, so my work is kind of never done. I could never, sometimes things come up and I'm like, how the heck is this my problem? Or I can't understand why this is going on. But I will let you know this. First of all, unless you get a DEC permit to trap animals in Woodbury, you should not be laying out traps around a lake. So this happened in one of our HOAs. I immediately called a board member there and I'm like, what the heck are you doing? So they had traps laid out all along the lake with watermelon inside. And I got a picture sent to me with a possum inside. Now opossums are good, okay? Because they eat all the, they eat all the ticks and everything else like that. But this should not be going on, okay? You have to get a license for it. I did call the Environmental Commission on it, okay? Because this was my second call in two weeks because somebody else in that same neighborhood decided to poison a bear, okay? And I have those photos and it's disgraceful, okay? They have just as much right to be as we do, okay? More, okay? So poisoning a bear is not cool and it needs to end. So I have been on the phone with the DEC about this. I have been on the phone with the Environmental Conservation Commission. But this is the type of garbage that I shouldn't be dealing with, okay? It shouldn't be going on in Woodbury, but it is. So that's that. No solicitation. Okay, so this came up in my neighborhood. Real estate company going door to door, okay? Now I am going to check with council on whether that, I could remove solicitation completely, where the only thing you'll get is religious organizations and politicians looking to sell themselves. Good luck to that one, okay? But I can't, I can't remove that. But there are 3,000-plus homes in Woodbury. Of those 3,000-plus homes in Woodbury, only 177 homes have signed up to be on the no solicitation list. And I have the complete list. And of that 177 homes, at least a dozen no longer live here. So it's there for you to take advantage of. If you don't, they are handed that list when they go door to door, that you do not touch these, you do not knock on their door, you do not ring their bell. And that's for every vendor, whether it's a real estate company or a solar panel company. So my suggestion is go onto the village's website, fill it out. You have to print it out, okay? We are working, with Maria's point, we are working on getting the complaint forms for the building department where they're automatically filled out online. I supposedly can't do that with the no solicitation because they need a record of they filled it out, this is the home for it, so on and so forth. So we are working on it on one end, but in the meantime, please, just print the, the Doshkhan form out and send it on in, all right? Like I said, there's only 177 that have been done, that's been done with. Okay. So I already written down, and this was a conversation that Jimmy Ning had brought up to me about the five-minute rule. So as part of the reorg, if I can remove it, I will be removing it. I have never enforced it, okay? For Mr. Fryban to have not, have a problem with Jimmy's comments, but not have a problem with Mr. Gargano's comments, I let Mr. Gargano speak for over 20 minutes, okay? I am never going to enforce that. It's not happening. Take me to court if you wish. Go complain to the Senator Scoofus or Ikas and tell them this mayor is not following instructions. It's not going to happen, okay? Because you people come here, I respect what you say. I am only here because of the individuals in this room. So if you want to speak on anything, you want to speak on your grandmother's dumpling recipe from the 1940s, I don't care. If you're having problems in the bedroom with your wife, once again, I'm here to listen, okay? The rest of the board can turn you off, but I am here. So that's not happening and I will take trustee Suriello's and Jimmy Ning's advice. And as part of the reorg, I will remove it. Look, Bob Hunter is telling me I'm going on too long, okay? Yeah, I know. I'm the mayor, I get to speak as long as I wish. Memorial Day, I'll just quickly touch on that. First of all, I want to thank Maria Hunter. This is a huge undertaking, huge, okay? There's a couple of the booklets, the journals that are here, that's part of the undertaking. Organizing the, getting the organizations there is part of the undertaking, the politicians, everything. What has gone on, and trustee Fryban is correct, is the numbers are dwindling and dwindling and dwindling. So this is your opportunity to honor those that made the... So this is your opportunity to honor those that made the ultimate sacrifice. You should be there, okay? You should be there, and then the men's club is doing, what do they do? Pass out ice cream or...
They do the hot dogs.
Hot dogs. There you go.
The hot dog soft drinks.
Okay. So please... They're going to be, after the parade, since you brought it up, they're going to be behind the office building in the cemetery, not behind the church where they used to be. They've been there a couple of years, but people don't realize that they moved, so... Okay, thank you. Go down by the cemetery, and then come back and have a hot dog and a soft drink. Okay. So let me just touch on the last item, okay? So there is no... I wish I had the library under my purview. I don't. I have the most difficult departments, and not one of them is easy. I am thankful for the department heads that I have, because this is not supposed to be a full-time job for me. So I bring this up because the building department could be the worst particular job, because all it is, is a giant complaint department. That's all you get. Nobody's going to tell you you're doing a great job, because nobody will realize it, okay? But the amount of complaints that do come in, whether it's high grass, or the garbage can has been left out, or whatnot, I can go on and on with the amount of complaints, but it is not easy, okay? Especially in Woodbury, when we have the amount of construction that is going on and that will be going on moving forward. So I bring this up because I know that we had a few people that took pachats at Mike, okay, that have had, that may have had issues. But trust me, it is not an easy gig. Gary Thomasberger, I don't know how he did it for 27 years, but he did it, and it's not an easy gig. So on behalf of the board, I want to thank Mike for his time here in the village of Woodbury. He did a good job in his time here. I wish him all the best in his future endeavors in Wartsboro. And that's all I have to say about that. So I would normally adjourn, take a motion to adjourn the meeting, but tonight, I've got to do an executive session, which I dislike immensely. So what I'm going to do, and you don't have to wait around for us because you don't want to, we, I have to have a motion in a second to enter in an executive session to discuss potential litigation.
Proposed.
Proposed. Even better. It's not potential, it's proposed. Okay? Yeah, it is. Yeah, well, I'll hear about that later. So can I get that motion in a second, please?
One last thing, I apologize.
Wait, we need a second?
I just, okay, do the second.
I have a second? I'll second it.
I'll second. Yeah? You got it? Okay. I just wanted to offer my words of congratulations to CJ and to Craig Brady for their appointments to the zoning and planning boards, even though I didn't vote for CJ. I appreciate you stepping up to the plate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's like a sleep... Everybody, I wouldn't, I have to come back out, but if I come back out and nobody's here, I will not be offended. And, and, there better be food here.
I said, "For your charge of my computer job, you're still here, so won't..."
Jessica McLennan, will you please come?
I don't think so.
And ladies and gentlemen, this will be held, this meeting will be held in conference room B. The Michael, the mayor, Mike Queen, in conference room.
Oh.
Shut it off. Shut up. I'm naming the conference...